Call into 1-470-327-0958. The Google Meet. In terms of attendance, we have myself, Scott Buckley, Richard McGowan, Vinnie and Briano in person. We have a member, Chris Pappas, a fellow on the Google Meet. Diana Bevel is not here right now. She had a prior obligation, but may join if she can later on. He's our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and we will begin with public input. I assume there's no public input since I see no public member other than Sophia. We're going to move to the student report. We are lucky to have Sophia Golopow? That always say that. I always say it wrong. Class of 2022 here to share a student report. Sophia.
Hi, everyone. I hope that runs well. I'm going to start off with academics. So basically, hybrid learning's been going really well for most people. And a lot of us have found it almost easier to manage our time because our teachers are also trying to adjust to this new way of learning. And then on October 14th, the seniors had the opportunity to take the SATs at the high school, which went very successfully. And sports, of the few sports that were fortunate enough to have a fall season, they're now coming to an end. Field hockey finished their season on Tuesday with a record of 5-3-2. And yesterday, boys soccer had their final official game where they concluded a great season of 7-1-2. Girls soccer has their last game this Sunday at 11 o'clock AM due to a rescheduled game against Penn Tucket. Both boys and girls cross-country have their last meet tomorrow at home. The boys team holds a record of 2-2 while the girls team holds a record of 0-4. And golf has had a great season as well, and they have a record of 6-4. Last week, all of the teams were really disappointed when we found out that the Cal tournament was canceled due to arising in cases of COVID-19. This has brought all of our seasons to a really abrupt end. Clubs are starting to spring into action. There, most of them are actually taking advantage of the hybrid model to maximize participation and attendance. As well as last week, all clubs had picture day. Student council completed their annual food drive last week. Interact Club is holding a candy drive for troops overseas through this Friday. And Powder Puff will be held this year, but signups were due today. And it's going to be a modified game for COVID regulations. And it's going to be a competition in which individuals compete for the furthest kick, punt, and pass. On October 23rd and 24th, Masters had a lot of success with their haunted walkthrough to celebrate Halloween. And then for student work, I wanted to just touch on how we're conducting labs right now for the hybrid system. So I'm in AP Bio, and it's usually a very lab-oriented class, and we're still taking advantage of that. So we basically have two styles. One is completely virtual through a computer app called Gizmos. And in that, we basically follow a story and need to solve a problem by performing tasks. And all of the tasks are related to the topic that we're investigating. And then the more hands-on way of doing labs is there's a group that's in-person and the group at home. So an in-class person will be partnered with a at-home person. And they'll do the whole investigation by basically presenting via Google Meet to their partner, which is actually really cool because you're not only learning as like the regular lab, but you're learning in a way that you have to be able to explain what's going on. And then one example I had of that was we investigated the toxicity of solutions and how that affects potato cells. And we would use a Google Sheets to share our information and then figured out how we could use all of the technology to work with graphs and presenting our data.
Very much. Any comments or questions?
I have a quick question. You've mentioned something about a candy drive for the personnel overseas?
Yes.
That's like Halloween candy, or are you looking for something specific?
It's very general. So the idea is, because it's like around Halloween, it's to bring in like your leftover candy. But I'm assuming all donations are greatly appreciated.
And where are you collecting that stuff?
At the main office. There's a bin that should be labeled.
Did you want to run to your house and grab your candy?
That's what I was thinking, because I actually wasn't around here for Halloween, but I bought a bag just in case my husband got a couple of people knocking on the door. And I generally don't eat candy, and my kids aren't around to eat it. So I was thinking, you know, hey, good opportunity. Maybe I'll swing by during the full hours.
Good. Great tiny question.
Sophia, are you on a blooded team this fall?
Yeah, I'm on the girls soccer team.
How did you think all that worked, notwithstanding the tournament being canceled? How did you feel about the experience with the various COVID restrictions?
It was definitely different. But obviously, I'm very grateful that we were able to have the season because so many of my friends in other towns got that taken away from them. So it was just so great to be able to be playing. Like, of course, it was a big adjustment at first because you don't realize the little rules changing really impact the game so much. But it was a really fun season, and it's so sad that it had to come to an end.
All right. The only comment I'll make is I went to the haunted Halloween walkthrough or whatever it was called for Masters, and it was great, as all the things the Masters do is, are. And it was just really cold on Saturday night. My kids were freezing by the end, but it was great that they were able to have us. So just nice seeing the resilience of people who walked in today. You see the band practicing in the parking lot right now. And we all remember 2020, so, okay. Chris, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thanks for sharing this stuff with us.
Sophia, congratulations on your win yesterday.
Thank you so much.
I just had a question for you. Later this evening, we're just speaking about a couple of things that are, might be of interest. I would just like your input. I know that's something we talked about this year as having your input on some of the items on the agenda. And one of the items I was curious about, you know, we're introducing the concept of a remote, a remote snow day this year, which you might think of it being used possibly in place of a delayed opening, where you would just, everybody would just be in remote that day instead of trying to drive to school if it's IC. You know, and then obviously those days, you know, wouldn't need to be snow days that would need to be made up later in the year. And that's something that we're going to be sharing out. But what is your thought from that from a student perspective?
That actually sounds like a really cool idea because I'm a new driver. I just got my license, basically. So thinking about driving in snowy conditions makes me a little nervous, so I'm assuming I'm not the only one. So just almost that ease of being able to just have that remote option seems really great.
Thanks, Sophia. And I don't know if you've got a copy of the agenda, Sophia, but are there any other things that you? I mean, you're welcome to stay as long as you like tonight, but I don't know. I think Dr. Dale is going to do a school reopening tonight. We're going to have a large capital presentation, the school calendar. We just talked about civic project update and then some policies. I don't know if you have any interest in anything or want to weigh in on anything in particular, because we're happy to discuss whatever you want first, if you would like.
I didn't have anything in mind that I thought needed mine.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. I know that committee member, Diana Bevel, is having trouble trying to get into the link, so please text me about that. So we're going to go on. We have no new business? No, we have continued business first. School reopening update, as we always seem to start now and after daily.
Sure. Might need to retitle it because I think I've been in school now for quite some time. It's really just a school update just this year. It's just, you know, updates on what's happening, but there's just so much happening. Certainly, COVID-19, we have seen a slight uptick in our schools, just as we have everywhere. To date, there's nothing, there's no confirmed transmission within the schools, which is very good. We have seen several students. There have been students at the kindergarten level. We've had students at some different schools, some staff members that have tested positive and others that are close contact. I want to do, just give particular attention to our nurses, who are absolutely going above and beyond every single day. I mean, not only are they checking daily health screenings every morning, but the time that they put in to make calls, to contact trace, and really just to huddle up and brainstorm. And, you know, every day, there's something new coming down the line that we need to think about. We're working very closely with the Department of Public Health in the town, with the public health nurse, and Mr. Brady as well. And it's just been a positive experience. But, you know, people are definitely exhausted, putting in a lot of time. And, you know, I think last weekend, I think we were good last weekend. But the previous three or four weekends, there was always a conversation and calls to be made. But the students have adjusted well. The teachers, you know, in a few cases where we've had a quarantine, we have a situation right now where we're in quarantine, but the educators have been well. And even though they're in the quarantine, and they've been well enough to teach remotely, so the classes just shifted to remote learning. And the teachers have made the adjustment, the parents, everyone who is out of the quarantine has made the adjustment. And, you know, we've continued with learning. You know, it's not, obviously, especially for kindergarten, it's not the same experience as you have in person. But we've made it the best possible situation that we can possibly make it. And we continue to have, I think we've heard from the state, from the governor, that, you know, the transmission levels in schools are not low. I think schools are a safe place to be.
Transmission levels are low.
What's that?
You said are not low, but they are low.
They are, yeah. Transmission is low. I'm sorry. They are not high. And the, you know, the idea that, you know, students are safely six feet apart, masked, and very clean. Our custodial team is doing a phenomenal job. We have incredible equipment that Mike will help to procure over the summer to keep our building safe. And I think we're certainly heading in the right direction. I wanted to update on the fall sports and extracurriculars. It is wonderful that we played. I've been able to get to all the games and see the students playing a variation of the games that they're used to, but they're certainly a lot closer to a typical year. And I think people are used to that. We've had our spectators. Our system that we worked on to get our fans in the stands has worked well. As mentioned, unfortunately, due to some districts getting into the red and having some concerns about postseason play, the postseason was canceled. And there's really no more information to date about the winter season. I was, you know, under the impression we would have something by the end of the week. There may be something coming tomorrow. But, you know, it does not look like we will have typical winter sports season starting after Thanksgiving. I don't think we're positioned to do that with basketball or hockey or those type of sports. But there will be additional guys coming. And I think, you know, I'm optimistic at the very least that we will be looking to that ploter season to see what other sports we can fit in. Because we, you know, we want to try, and I think the state and all the coaches and all the administrators across the state want to get as many opportunities for students as possible. It just might, like everything else, might look a little different this year. Extracurriculars are similarly starting up. We're at the secondary level. We have clubs that are running virtually that are going to be happening both at the middle school and the high school. And some are underway and others are ready to begin very soon. So that process is well underway. Students are able to participate in those activities. And, you know, we had our professional development day on November 3rd, on Tuesday. I had the pleasure of continuing to work with all the art, music, performing arts, phys ed, health. And that team of about 30 people, it was just such an incredible energy. You can imagine the creativity in that group, in that space. And just was so positive, just sharing great ideas, you know, who's having success with different aspects of hybrid, who has questions, who can help. And, you know, we focused all of our discussion around, all the educators this year have two goals that are driving the work they're doing. One around hybrid teaching and learning, one around social justice. And the administrative team identified a series of essential questions for us all to grapple with. And the discussions in my group and as reported across the district were incredible. And I think the teachers are, you know, committed to doing their, doing hard work around goals this year, but really trying to get them to see that this is an extra work and, you know, one more thing they have to do that if they can identify these as goals and we can help them to provide the supports, the resources and supports that they need, that the goals are really going to be the foundation for the work we do. And for everyone to identify what's working well, where they can improve, so that we can strive for continuous improvement. So that's the focus of what we're doing. And I think that, you know, what I'm hearing, I did my brown bag lunch check-in where I, you know, typically I go to each school and sit there during lunch and people come and we talk. This time I did it virtually, but I certainly heard loud and clear from our teachers and staff that what they're doing is working. They have questions. They have struggles. It's exhausting. They're working harder than they've ever worked. And they're exhausted. And I've been saying, and I'll say it again later tonight, but I keep saying that we're pioneers in a lot of ways. Not a lot of districts started on September 17th. Not a lot of districts have been going continuously in-person, hybrid, but in-person every day. And we're kind of at the head of that line. And we don't really know when we need breaks and what those breaks need to look like. And so some of what we're going to suggest and talk about more tonight is about just giving some of that very welcome, you know, respect to our teachers that absolutely need that. So we're going to talk more about that. But overall, there is, you know, despite the, you know, the fatigue, I think is a good way to say it. There's a lot of positive energy out there. I think people are still happy to be back at school. And we're now focusing on sort of those next issues that are out there. One major thing that we're looking at is how can we continue to work with those students that are most at risk when they're at home? And trying to expand and support in different ways, students that are not doing well in the remote environment. So we have a lot of different ideas that we've been discussing. We spent a lot of time with our administrative team coming up with some solutions, some that are broad and can bring in people quickly, and others that are going to be a little bit more complex. But we certainly have that on our radar now. That's really the next phase. As I said, reopening has happened, and now it's really about continuation. Because all indications are we're going to be in hybrid for the rest of the year. And, you know, the other indication is that I don't see us going to full remote. The big game changer was when they said, if you're in red, you do not need to close all your schools. So as long as we have the staffing and there's not a huge outbreak, if it continues as it is right now, I see us pretty much staying open and staying in hybrid. So we now have to make some adjustments to make sure we understand how to make that as successful as it can possibly be this year.
And so I don't know if there are any questions about reopening or about anything that we're doing right now? Or if any questions?
I just want to ask two things. On the operational, on the operational side of things. As Dr. Daley mentioned, I think from a facility management point of view, I think the custodians are doing an exceptional job. We're now really into a flow of just what was sort of doing things differently and sort of a new job back in mid-September is now seems very routine in terms of the cleaning that occurs every single night, the touch points. They really developed a nice, a nice routine, a nice rhythm. So we're certainly pleased to see that. On busing too, we have an administrative meeting today, and I think principals continue to report it. So I think that's in a nice, now a nice flow in terms of the timing and that, the things that have seemed to settle in as we expected, you know, a couple months in. So I think certainly bus transportation, you know, a nice, nice flow and definitely change schedule for ridership. And from a food service perspective, again, I think the food service program and team there under Ann McGovern and Charles leadership have been, has done a really exceptional job as well. We continue to pursue opportunities of how to increase defensive revenue. So there was an email that went out just a week ago that now announced to the community that we are now offering meals for weekends. So that's part of their USDA's federal extended program to the end of the year is you now can claim and provide meals for weekends. So we have added last Friday, we actually started it, and then tomorrow will be the second Friday where families have the opportunity to come and pick up meals for both setting, and they have to include both breakfast and lunch. Another thing the USDA announced is that you no longer, for this one school year, need to be what is referred to as area eligible or a district that has a population of economically disadvantaged of 50% or greater to participate in the subsidized access snack program. So we are in early conversations with the YMCA program that does the access school program at our elementary schools to kind of take over that access school snack program. And we are working with the, we actually have a meeting with the conference call with the DSD tomorrow and try to get access school snacks added to our agreement at the elementary schools so we can staff provide a note that in the access school program, and it receives federal reimbursement for that as well. So a lot happening, you know, a lot changing all the time. But, you know, I think we're, I think it's definitely a rhythm and a flow of what's happening from an operational standpoint in those areas.
Thanks, Michael. Chris, any comments, questions?
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
Chris?
I did have a question for you, for Dr. Daley, and I forgot what it was. So I guess no.
Vinnie?
Uh, no.
My only comment last question was about the remote learning. I know that there's a lot of challenges, you know, with trying to get the park and rec program up and running. And I know that you were able to talk to YMCA and get something up. And I saw that you were going to go out about 13 at each elementary school. I'm just wondering what the, you know, what the interest level was, kind of how that's going. Did that start already, or?
It is scheduled to begin. They're just working on the final details. The initial demand was not, didn't surpass 13 at each school. There was, I believe, the bachelor, the highest demand, and so we're just figuring out the location. But we're at, I think it's about 10 to 15 total that came in very quickly. Again, we just sent it out less than a week ago. I think, you know, some folks have probably made some other arrangements. But what's happening is as more schools are starting to go back, or people might be starting to go back to jobs, things are changing at home. So it's just another option that people have. So we're happy to get that out there for folks. And that will be starting very soon. So the YMCA was able to facilitate that with us. And we will keep you posted on what that looks like. And like I mentioned before, we're also exploring some other options for the students that are most at risk for not being successful. So we've heard from some of those parents and teachers as well about, you know, students that it's just really challenging in that environment. I think it's frustrating for everyone, but there's a difference. And that's going to be the, you know, that's a difficult decision is, you know, for the principals to understand the difference between those that are really struggling and having an issue. We wish we could bring everyone in. I think it's important to clarify that as well, because I do get that question a lot. Why can't we just bring everybody back? And I think people need to understand that part of the reason why it is working right now is we are at the six feet. We are keeping all those safe distances. That's what our Board of Health has approved. That's what we've been able to negotiate with everyone. And it's also what we feel is safe. And it's more than just in the classrooms. It's also the entire school, right? So all the buses, all the lunches, we'd have to, we couldn't, we couldn't run lunches the way we're running them if we had twice as many people. We couldn't have twice as many people in the hallways at the same time officially between classes spaced as we do. I mean, right now, it's running really well, and the students really are maintaining that safe distancing. When you double the amount of people, you're more than, you know, you're increasing that risk. And any chances that we take or rushing anything back jeopardizes everybody having to go out, which we don't want to see. And we're seeing a lot of districts that are completely remote, and we're trying to keep that hybrid. I think you're seeing a push from the state to support the model that we have, which is three days and two days each, you know, alternating weeks. So I think, I think if the Department of Ed were called and questioned about the North Reading model, they would say you're doing everything that you need to do right now. I don't think there's any, the governor or the commissioner, I think, would definitely think that. They'd be, I'm very confident to say they would be very pleased with what we're doing here in North Reading. I think when they talk about other ideas, they're concerned with districts that are in full remote. That's what their focus is. And I'm confident that from all the conversations that I've had with the commissioner basically weekly since last March. But that is a question that does come up.
I just could have a comment on that, that one thing that the governor said earlier, I think it was earlier this week, that was, you know, I'm not sure he meant it exactly like this, but when he said it was a mistake to shut the schools down in April. That was a bit of an unfortunate comment, in my view, just because I don't think it's true. I don't think anybody at the school level really thinks it's true. It was a completely different situation than it is right now.
Yes.
But people shouldn't take that as, you know, the governor and that he's really encouraging people to, or schools to go back to full in-person without, you know, taking the proper precautions.
Absolutely. And he has the, you know, the hindsight, you know, you got to remember back in April, I was going to the grocery store and watching all my groceries, bringing them in the house. It was, we didn't know if it was on the table. We didn't know anything at that time. And it really wasn't safe because we just didn't know.
And there was a much more of the disease, of the illness. It was more prevalent in Massachusetts.
Exactly. And we've learned, we've learned so much since then and be able to make a judgment, adjustments and set up our schools in a safe way. But I think the point is, I think also what he was saying was, from the student feedback and the student learning perspective, it's never a good idea to have students not in school. And so, and indeed, there is a ripple effect of students being out of school with the economy. And I think that's all true, and I think that's why, as I said earlier, I see us staying in a hybrid model at least. You know, I don't see us going to full remote, which again begs the question of, you know, needing some breaks. So we'll talk about that again later.
Okay. Other comments? They got to large capital presentation finally.
You know, there is an updated powerpoint, which I'm going to just go through quickly. I think Dr. Daley pulled up for the folks on the call. But I think, I think we had a very good discussion and conversation at the last meeting, and there was some good comments and feedback raised. And we have an update to the capital plan, so everything you kind of got last week is a little bit of an update to it. We had the opportunity to firm up some numbers with the proposals that came in between the October meeting and this evening from facility projects. And then we had the opportunity to go back and take a nice closer, closer look at our technology needs and our Chromebooks and the age of the Chromebooks by grade level, as well as the ones that are kind of on order, that are still back ordered financially, and looked at it realistically and said, what are the needs? So there's an update to the numbers. I'll just, I'll just kind of touch upon them. Quick, you know, the three-year chart has changed somewhat. Mainly the technology in the facility has been some adjustments to those requests. So in light of the conversation last week, Dr. Downs, Digital Learning Director, and myself brought together, Dr. Daley weighed in, and we do feel like the $50,000 request was probably, you know, probably too small. Again, we're trying to be ultra kind of conservative from a budget perspective. But that $60,000 generally would support one grade of acquisition and replacement. As you know, we have K through 12, our one-to-one environment, where previously last year it was seven through 12. So it is true that we've doubled the amount of devices. We've, certainly the usage is greatest than it's ever been. And we feel like at minimum, we really need to look at two grades of replacement. So this would get us about 400 devices, which would cover replacement of two grades with some additional devices for other needs as needed in some other areas because it's not quite 200 students per grade. So we've gone and we've looked at the age of the equipment between grade seven and 12, and the age of the equipment between kindergarten and grade six. Some of those grades do have Um, some of those grades do have devices that are five years old. Um, so we think that they're at the end of their useful life, so at minimum between what would get repurposed from twelfth grade down and what we need to acquire is we could do it with four hundred devices at two grades on an annual basis. Uh, that also takes into consideration what's kind of on cue that we will receive at some point in late winter, um, that are backordered. So we would bring those devices up to speed as well. So, so we do think with the combination of next year, there might be probably four grades that might need replacement next year. I think we looked at it and there are four grades that are grade five, uh, five years old. Um, but with what's on two coming in and with this allotment, uh, we think we'd be covered. And then on an ongoing basis, we do think we need to double that annual request from sixty to one hundred and twenty, um, at minimum in even two grades of replacements. That would really focus on student devices. Um, there's also a need for staff, staff devices as well. Um, so we've looked at that, we, we using federal funds this year to do a replacement of the majority of the elementary staff devices, which are in the worst condition or the oldest condition. So, um, again, some of those are backordered, but we're slowly getting those in, we're putting those right into action, right into, um, uh, cycle with the elementary instructional staff. So we actually feel, um, like we'll certainly need an allotment of thirty to forty thousand dollars, um, on an annual basis after we get this, um, you know, huge amount of, uh, our big bulk order that comes in this year with the federal funds. And we actually feel like through the operational budget, uh, we might focus on those staff devices with that annual allotment. That cost per unit is about eight hundred dollars. We think that we might need between forty and sixty devices there, um, but we want to, we think the large capital should, would focus mainly on the student devices, that is about four hundred devices a year. That again does two grades and it does give us an extra thirty or forty devices potentially to, to shift around as needed. And maybe we think that minimum, that's, that's the need. Um, so we have made that adjustment, that was based on a lot of the feedback as well from the last meeting. Um, no changes here, we still think we need the maximum of forty-five thousand. We're still using these devices, um, and we, we still think this request that probably often would have been funded this year, um, had things stayed kind of normal. Um, but we think this, this needs to be, this needs to happen in, certainly one, one funding source among others, but we definitely need an allotment to take care of the instructional classroom equipment that is being used every single day. Um, this request stays the same, the multi-function vehicle, uh, we talked about it last time. This request stays the same, we did get some updated pricing and looked at the extra attachments that we would need and, um, we, that amount we confirmed is, is a good amount to, to get us what we need, the sixty-five thousand dollars for the tool cap. Um, little school paving project, we actually had two different companies come out, one was the town contractor and relooked at the job, remeasured, re-quoted, um, gave us the, you know, the, the quote for, you know, full, full replacement of that, of that lot. And we did confirm that with the hundred thousand dollar allotment, it's about eighty, eighty-two to eighty-five thousand dollar jobs. That gives us some extra funding for some review of traffic flow, um, engineering, kind of traffic flow study, because that's some money available for that, as well as the striping, uh, that we need to recur as well. So we think that, that number is good, we re, we actually reconfirmed that number or trued up that number. Um, we got, we, so I think I said last time, the fifty thousand dollars I had in there was kind of an estimate, we had, we were waiting for the proposal. Their proposal came in and believe it or not, it was actually higher. It was just under sixty-five thousand dollars. So I had to actually increase that amount. Uh, the picture there on the right is, was part of the proposal of what it finished product, example of what a finished product would look like. Again, that's kind of that, that vinyl socket with an aluminum metal wrap is really what I was trying to say last meeting, um, is sort of what, is what the result would be. Um, but we did need to, uh, invest a bit more money in this, in this project based on that proposal. Um, and we are due to kind of submit these projects to CIPC at the end of the month. Um, when we submit to CIPC, we, we do need to put those in priority order as we know, um, which sometimes, as you know, is a difficult task. So this is a snapshot of the FY twenty-two jobs, which probably is what the CIPC mainly focuses on. We do submit three years worth of projects, as you know, our plan involves five, five goes out as, as much as five. Um, but this was the administration's, uh, priority with, with, um, feeling that again, it's always been what's, what's needed from an instructional standpoint and from safety standpoint. Um, certainly the technology, um, you know, with the environment that we're in is even more important than it's al, al, always been, but it's always been important with, with twenty-first learning tools and just the, the ability to, to have a one-to-one, you know, we're never going to go back from, from a one-to-one environment throughout our districts, so we need the equipment, we need to make these replacements, we need, you know, one thing goes down and we see it firsthand now when we walk through these classrooms, as Dr. Daley has said, now I've heard him say it a few times. Um, one, one area of these technologies break down, it's, it's hugely interruptive to the whole, to the whole process. So it, it really needs to be a focus. Um, and certainly the paving, um, you know, I, I don't think we can wait any longer on this, this is year three, we're trying to get the funding for this. Um, so that certainly needs to be a priority. And number four here, and I think, I, I, we certainly debated four, five and six. Um, I think they're all important. Four certainly has a significant payback and it can just make our operation that much more efficient, um, in the sockets and the, and the fascia, I mean, that's just sort of a, a maintenance item that needs to happen. And then again, payback period on four and six, you know, if four years or, or under is, is just, is hard to me, hard to argue with. Um, so that, that's kind of where we fell and, and we're asking for about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of projects for year one. Uh, the memorandum in the packet laid out projects for years, uh, two and three, fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four, which again is not, not a huge focus. Uh, CIPC mainly focuses one year out, but again, they, they do look at what's coming into pipeline as well. So, um, you know, I think this captured the majority, you know, the comments and the feedback from last, from last week, but I, I did, I wanted to open it up to discussion. Um, we don't have to make a vote tonight, but I felt like we were comfortable enough and the data was there, um, we could and that would allow us to, to move forward with submission to CIPC. So I'll, I'll open up to discussions.
Okay. I guess first, we have questions about the presentation or anything. And I, I have one quick question, which is the, the timing, if you can remind me, because my concern is that a couple of these items, if they don't happen, they're going to have to be part of our budget anyway, no matter what happens. And so I'm, I'm always concerned about like when they make a decision on CIPC versus when we're doing the budget.
Yep.
And I feel like sometimes it comes in, it, it, do they come in afterwards or does it always silence decisions?
Great question. If everything works out perfectly on the timeline, we would be finalizing, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee would be finalizing their recommendations to submit to the Select Board for final approval, um, sometime around the middle of April. So it would be right around the time we're doing our public hearing. Um, and we don't vote the budget to the beginning of May now, so we would, we should know by the beginning of April, um, what their recommendation is going to be. So I think it would still allow us to, to make changes as needed if, if we felt something on that list wasn't getting the support by the CIPC.
Because I, I almost think we need to put into our budget some of the technology, maybe even the tool cap, that can just be there as part of the budget and then it can be a discussion on both ends. And then if it doesn't end up getting funded through CIPC, we can talk about it and, you know, almost go over there. Rich?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's kind of a, what's the strategy too going into the, the discussion that, that happened, CIPC between now and, and April? I don't know how, how much discussion is done early or how much of it's really determined right at the end, but, uh...
Yeah. So generally what the process has been is requests will go in by the end of the month. Um, the committee will probably need to review the initial request early in December and then presentations will be scheduled. The school department's always done their presentation just prior to the winter break. So we typically are early in that list, um, kind of appearing for Christmas. Um, and then January, uh, we complete the presentations by all the other departments, town departments, and then February we make our site visits. And then March, we debate the ranking and follow-up and the, this follow-up that we need to receive from department heads that we have to, to make a decision, we, we make sure that happens. And then our final rankings are due by usually by the end of March and then in the early April, we put together the, the recommendation to submit to Select Board. That's kind of the process. Um, so...
Yeah, I guess, I guess that would just to sort of reach, you know, take you back on what Scott said. Um, it feels like we should do all these projects this year, one way or the other. Just need to find that, uh, I mean, I guess you, they're all either time-sensitive or have payback or, um, are, in the case of the technology, key to our, um, you know, ongoing education.
Yep.
Uh, you know, the, the sockets and fascia are not going to get any better, just, you know, not being addressed, uh, and we have the payback that we get from the, the tool cap and the, and even the multi-function activity vehicle, um, where, where reduces our, our bus fees, right? So there is some value there. Um, so I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is agreeing with Scott that we, we probably need to, I think, keep that sort of strategy of trying to get all these done one way or the other as we go through it.
Right.
Obviously if we can get, if we can get them to agree to all of them, that'd be great.
I mean, it's just...
I don't know if there's any horse trading that's done, done it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we'll have it in the case, so typically we're going to release the budget early, mid-February, the school department, there was superintendent's preliminary budget.
Yep.
Typically, I think we get a good sense after that presentation and me being a member of committee who's even privy to some of the dialogue afterwards, what's getting support and what's not getting support. So I think we'll have a little bit of a better sense of where, from a town perspective, where the funding is, what's going on in the town end, what's pertinent, what, what some of these projects could be up against, um, to try to, a little bit better, to try to make some of those decisions. Do we need to kind of, you know, hedge some of that by, by beefing up some of our operating lines? And I think that probably, you know, would make some sense. I, I hear that, yeah.
Denise?
Well, kind of along the lines of what you were just saying, um, having been on the CIPC before, it's, I, I get the idea of it, it's, it's things that don't normally come up every year, like you need to repaint the library or the, you know, fire engines need to be replaced. But in the lines of technology, every year, both towns or I should say municipal and school sites always have technology in it.
Correct.
Wouldn't it make more sense if this isn't asked, you can take back to them instead of taking it out of free cash, which they do, because you're not going to, uh, take out a loan for
Correct, right.
a piece of equipment that's going to be non-essential in five years? Wouldn't it make more sense for the town to put that into the budget? And then take those out so that you do have room for a tool cap, which you're not going to get every year? Or, you know, paving of a, a thing?
Yeah.
So is that an asset you can take back to them and
Yeah, I, it's a...
and take it off for technology because...
Yeah, I, I, it's a valid, uh, point and I think it's a different approach, um, than, than they've, than we've taken, but I, I think, you know, I, I, I agree with, I agree with all of what you're saying. I think in some ways, some of this potentially could, should belong in the operational budget, it just, it just hasn't and this is the process we've gone through both town, municipal and school. Municipal has gotten an allotment for computer replacements through CIPC on an annual basis as well, so...
Yeah, but eight or ten years ago, it was a way different scenario where you, you might have had a laptop or a, a mainframe computer, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
Um, that would last five to seven, eight years, but now everyone needs a device. Every town person, municipal person, so it just makes more sense to me to put it into the budget.
Yeah, and it's a lot, and it's embedded into part of our, every, our day-to-day curriculum and, and what, what we do, um, and what we need for everyday learning.
But how that works out in terms of share of money that we're getting versus the town, that's a little tricky.
Right. So I think it has to be a town-wide conversation, probably...
It has to know because if every year we're going and asking for XML and every year the municipal side is going to ask for XML.
Right, I think what I'm saying is I think it has to be a, a, a town-wide discussion at five shares and vice shares.
Right.
Because it's certainly going to have an impact on the revenue plan and, and funds that are typically available for other areas, if, that might even flow into the, the revenue plan. So I, I, if they're willing to make that adjustment, it's an accounting adjustment. You know, funds that are kind of over here, designate the capital, the capital stabilization, through free cash that they set aside for capital, if that funds back to the operating dollars to the revenue plan, um, then that makes sense and that can happen both on the municipal and the school side. Does that make...
It does. I think it comes, I, just to echo what you're saying, when I started here, you know, the capital plan was every few years, it's interesting, the numbers haven't really changed, even though it's ten years later, but that's, if you go back and look at FY ten and eleven, when I started, the numbers are pretty similar. Um, we used to buy computers to the high school, replace those, take the old high school ones and put them in the elementary because it was this idea that, oh, they could use the old, the old Windows XP computer and they could still, you know, it's just the kids, they're running their little software for, it's not that way anymore. The kids today, the teachers today in those classrooms are running state-of-the-art stuff, every kid's using it. And as we discussed, you know, we're absolutely, you know, one of the, you know, we talked about making lemonade out of, you know, taking lemons to make lemonade. You know, our students and teachers in grades K one, two, three are using their Chromebooks every single day to learn. We're not going backwards from there. So that, you know, this is, this is what it's going to be, education, the way it looks, the way it feels is going to be different forever after this year and last spring. And so we do need to support this in a different way and really think about it differently. And, you know, we do have to realize, we, we, we are very conservative, we do stretch out our devices and get a lot of life out of them, but these Chromebooks have a, have a lifespan, they're coming up. Our high school, you know, devices, believe it or not, something bought from the high school is going to be eight, nine years old next year. Uh, that's a, that's a long time for those devices and those are still working, but we, we have to be thinking about those as well. So coming up with a plan to start slowly replacing the ones that are breaking, um, and, and are no longer compatible is, is something we need to do to keep moving forward.
And I think, I think the other thing is that is probably true and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, but the fact that, you know, it's different when you're talking about students taking computers home with them every day, using them at home, using their things, throwing them in their book bag, and, and I'm not saying they're not being careful, but it just adds to the wear and tear, not like they're sitting in a cart until they're, until they're used and then they go back to the cart and then they're safe and...
Absolutely. And just the amount of use they're getting. It's not, it's not a nice to have, it's that you can't learn without this and also they're using them every single day, every single period of every day. Um, and it's just, there's a lot of wear and tear in that too. They're getting good use though.
It's, it's an ongoing discussion and
Yep.
and it may not be solved this year, but it's, it's longer.
I think it, I think it all makes sense what, what...
And it's fair, I mean, those, those items didn't go through in July, they didn't go through in October. So we had requests for, for technology last year.
Right. So we, we were, a year ago or so, at the last year, we actually were attempting to move some of this into the operating budget and then to balance it got taken out and then, and then that, and then just, it's a couple of that, the CIPC technology got deferred as well. So, um, so yeah, I, I think, you know, I think hearing your comments, I think that there certainly makes sense. One, one approach I, I think we could take is we, we kind of move it forward as we've normally done. Um, and, you know, with a little caveat that we want to have a further conversations about, um, some of this pertinent technology for computers and, and it makes sense to kind of have the money move and flow into the operating budget. Um, and by, by submitting it, then we know that it's kind of on their radar, it's there in front of them and then we can bring it up in both, in both, um, to both groups really, to, to the finance planning team and, and to, you know, CIPC.
It does feel like a, a lot of the discussion is a finance planning team discussion.
Right.
Um, in terms of the longer-term picture, whereas the, the request list obviously is critical position.
I think, I think the key thing here is number one, at least number one on this, probably number two, are things that we can't go about. I mean, there's, there's no question we have to have the Chromebooks. If, if they're not funded through CIPC, they have to be funded another way. And I don't think that's what CIPC was originally for. And then even something like number four, the tool cap, is something where frankly, with the amount of work that we're putting our, on our custodial staff right now, if they have to start doing, eh, doing everything by hand, we're going to either have to staff another person or we're going to have to have a better tool for them to use. And so my only point is just, I, I think we need to go about it both ways and if the town decides we would rather, you know, shift more funds into the funding of the operational budgets year to year or change the percentage or something like that, but I don't think you can do that, to change the percentage, because the town and the municipal side has has, the municipal side has a lot of needs. But they want to shift a little bit over there. You know, we have to see what the budget's going to be this year. I'm sure it's going to be a tough budget year as it as it always is. But we are actually in a very good position from a free cash standpoint compared to other years. And so it it's a discussion that has to be placed, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's mainly a percentage basis. I think it's just, it's the, it's the assumptions in the revenue side in that equation. And the revenues can be adjusted to, so it make room for some of these additional operating needs that then will no, won't be the request through CI PC, which would free up for kind of real capital type one-time needs. That we know there's a lot of, there's a lot of needs on both, on the town side as well for the building improvement standpoint.
Chris, I assume you're in favor of everything I said and of not anything anybody else says?
Um, no, no, I'm in favor of everything Rich said. No, um, I mean, you guys are, I mean, you're, you're making, I think, all the important points that need to be made. I don't know what the solution is, but it it really seems clear that we need to find some sort of solution because, as you said, we're, we can't do without one. And and it it seems foolhardy to go without four. I understand that in the scheme of things, why it would be ranked down as the fourth one, but but still, you you pose the idea that not getting that means we might have to hire more staff or hire some other tools. At the very least, it means that we're out, what did we say, $12,000 or somewhat each year we don't have it as money's getting tighter. And it just, it's, it's, it's tough. And I I really hope that we can work something out. I don't know the, the right strategy to do that, but but we need to figure something out.
Now, now we get to decide if we want our left hand or our right foot. And so we need to decide on the ranking of everything. I don't know if people have thoughts on, you know, the the administration ranking, rankings of one through six for this year. The only thing that I would bring up, well, two things. Number one, on the software and space, I just wonder, I feel like right now, materials are very, very expensive. I wonder if, I I wonder if it might actually be a little bit better, you know, in in future years? And I have been a huge advocate of little school paving projects, but even I wonder if the tool CAD is something that is, you know, needed even before that because if not, it'll be, you know, out of the operational budget, it'll be adding staff. And so the one change that I might think about would be like four over three. And maybe six over five, but.
Here's where the strategy comes in, though. It's like, what, what might be, what might we be willing and able to do ourselves this year? Is, is the CAD one of them first?
Yeah.
So if we put it down, then we, it seems weird to be saying this in a public meeting that anybody in the CI PC can be listening to, but, you know, and it's sort of, it's there to be traded away or, you know.
I mean, they, like Michael said, like, they're going to rank however they want anyways. And so, but ultimately, I.
I think we're all in agreement on one and two. And the others are, I guess, more of a practicality, more of a, I I agree with the tool CAD. If we don't end up with a tool CAD by the, you know, by September, one way or the other, it's probably not a good thing.
I I just, I mean, I just worry, we're, we're strapped, we've been trying to add custodial staff overall.
No, I agree.
And this year, like, we're just doing so much and I can't imagine when it starts snowing and we have to tell people, now we need three of you to go off to start, to start shoveling when we're supposed to be, you know, like, we get an afternoon snow, we have to have the schools ready for COVID B coming in. And now we have our, all of our custodians outside shoveling instead of one of them using the tool CAD and the other people getting the school ready for the next day. And so, I don't know. Chris, any thoughts on ranking?
Um, pains me to say, but I I I agree with you, Scott. I think that this isn't the year for the paving project. It's not that it's not the year for the paving project, but it's that the the tool CAD, and I think the multi-function vehicle should should bump up to that and that the, we we could probably better tolerate a delay on the paving project and the little school facade repairs than we could the others.
I guess the one thing you can say about the paving project is that they, well, I guess it's not really getting any less traffic, really, is it?
There, there's only half the people there every day.
Right, but it's still the same number of cars and buses every time.
But there's, yeah, I mean, the, the, the thing in favor of the little school is it's all beat up right now.
Yeah.
And it'd be a nicer turn, you know, turnaround and, like, students are everywhere right now and they're walking over, they're walking over places that there's, there's no, like, one of my concerns is that the PTA, the PTO donated $100,000 to make the playground. And you, there's no, like, there's no crosswalk to get over to the playground. We're dropping kids off at every door now until you're walking over non-paved areas to get there. And it's just, it's dangerous. And so.
Well, that's what that.
That's the argument for being hired, isn't that like, you need it now because, you know, you need better, you know, markings and, like, people should know where they're, where they're going and, I don't know. I guess that it's, it's your left hand or your right foot, so I don't.
I, I mean, I, and, you know, I obviously don't observe the, the, the actual traffic there as much or much at all, but, I mean, as you described that, that means, says to me the legal word.
Yep. And if that's what the administrators wanted, I don't know that.
Doesn't anyone have a crystal ball that can predict what kind of weather they're going to have this year?
Everyone started early.
Everyone's saying bad.
Someone said, because the squirrels are dark, it's going to be a bad winter. I don't know if that stands for true, but I guess my point is, you know, if we were sure that we were going to have a mild winter, you might push off the tool CAD a little bit more. But if it's going to be a pretty bad winter like it was in 2012, you might want to have a tool CAD.
Yeah, but all this is for next year anyway. We're not going to.
Well, that's true, too, yeah. So I don't know.
It's hard because that's, they're all, they're all needs, you know, that's, that's not, really don't work, it's kind of nice to have.
I'd, I'd be fine with keeping it the way it is.
Yeah.
Or possibly switching three and four, those are the only, that's the only thing that I would suggest. But if the administrators prefer this order, I mean.
I would leave it at this one. Okay.
Okay. So do we want to have a motion? And if there's a recommended motion, nobody wants to read it? I have it if anybody wants to.
Is there a recommended?
It's on the bottom of the memo.
I will move that the school committee vote to approve the large capital improvement projects and in the priority order presented by the administration to the capital, to the capital improvement planning committee for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24.
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay. A roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, so pass is four to zero. Thank you very much. Benji? Okay, moving on. That's daily, the school calendar.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention this, it's not necessarily, I mean, I, I put it on here as a vote just because I think it's just important to recognize. It's not as much a change to the school calendar as it is just giving some, some much-needed and welcome, rest to our, our staff. And the suggestion that I made prior, I would, I would make that recommendation again that for the calendar as currently constituted on the Monday, November 23rd, Tuesday the 24th, and Wednesday the 25th, which is a half-day, leading into Thanksgiving. And then a similar set of days in December leading into the winter break, that we would approach those days as full remote days. Students would still be learning, it would just be in remote, like many other districts are in remote. And this would just allow additional flexibility for all of our staff and families to make the best decisions around these holidays and to just have a little bit of a different situation that just might bring that level of anxiety that everyone's feeling down a little bit about, about holiday gatherings. And, you know, this is an idea that came from, by listening to her, I heard this from some of our teaching staff shared this idea. I thought it was a good idea, I brought it to the administrative council, I brought it to our local group of of administrators in town, and the chiefs, and the board of health. The recommendation from that group was to just be careful that we position this, this is not meant to encourage additional travel or additional gatherings. It's just meant to be some additional flexibility and really something that's, that's well-deserved for the staff that's been, been doing something for quite some time and for our students as well, just to have some additional time and flexibility around the holidays. So my recommendation is for those two days, two and a half days to be, the buildings would be open for the teachers or for anyone that wants to come in to, to teach from their classrooms. The buildings would be open and we would be here as we normally are, and it would be open, but folks would have that ability to, to work from home. So, questions?
I think we brought it up last time, but there was some concern about the same cohort being off two days where the other cohort wasn't. And was there any talk about switching so that?
Yes, we, we will make sure that there's a balance, and I'll put that in my communication, that we'll make sure there's a balance. There was already a bit of an imbalance with the numbers by one, I think. So you remember, in that, in that week B already wasn't coming in the end of the week anyway, because those are the holidays. So this is balancing it a little bit more. And then we'll look at the numbers as you go down and make sure there's an even balance. But I know high school is the most complex, so they actually thought this actually helped correct some of the imbalances of the number of A green days, A gold days versus B green and gold. So they felt that that would work out. But I'm sure we will, we will make sure to balance that as well.
I think this is a, I think the reasoning for doing this are, are sound and make a lot of sense. And I think many families will welcome it. My only concern is families who are so reliant on once they get the schedule locked in, they're so reliant on the schedule. But that's always, and this won't apply to everybody, but Thanksgiving week is always the most sort of more flexible week oftentimes for work. Anyway, so, I mean, I think it's, I think it's worth doing, I just, you probably should recognize that. It's not, it'll help some people and other people might actually inconvenience, but given the notice and, and the sound reasoning, I think we should go ahead and do it.
And it, this would apply to all students as well, even our cohort C students. And again, I I recognize how important it is for those students to be in person, but giving breaks as needed and giving staff a chance to refresh properly is going to make that much more impact when they are in person, when they're back. And I think that, I think we'll look back on this as something that was positive, that helped us get through. As I've said many times, and I said earlier tonight, we've never had a year like this and our calendar is built on a typical year. This is very different and we need different breaks and different, different opportunities to refresh. And so we think this is a positive idea that we hope you'll support.
I thought, I thought it was interesting what you said about other folks from other departments in the town making the point about, you know, hopefully this will not encourage people to do extra gatherings that they might not, probably won't anyway, but, you know, it does give them the opportunity to sort of reset and make sure everybody's healthy going into the, whatever gathering they do end up doing. But that seems like a positive.
I mean, I, I think, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm a little back and forth on this one. I mean, I'm going to support it, just to be clear, but.
Well, you, you have more hands-on, you know, experience about what it's going to mean, right, to, to a family, yeah?
I, I mean, it's, it's a tough week already and then with, with, I mean, I think overall, we've tried to prioritize time in school. And so the reason that we said we wanted, you know, learning to happen on Wednesdays was because, you know, we didn't want to just, we didn't want to have these beautiful buildings here without people in them. We believe in in-person learning. And so, you know, that's my concern. I mean, I have a student that's in cohort C and I do know that for cohort C, that's particularly challenging. Even my two students that are not in cohort C, you know, I think they like more the days that are in person. But I see the other side of it, too. You know, I think that, you know, you wouldn't want to have, you know, you get a close contact call because on Wednesday, someone's kid came to school and now you're at your parents', you know, you're, you're just having Thanksgiving dinner with your, with your elderly parents or grandparents on Thursday. You know, and that's, that is a very real concern that, you know, this is talking about the last time you'd be in person with a student would be on Friday, which gives you six days before, you know, you're, you're in, you know, going to do anything with anybody else. So I think it makes sense and, and ultimately, I'll, I support it because if the administrators and the teachers think that it's, you know, a good way to do it, I, I don't think of it as much as like a break because there's still learning happening, but, you know, I, I obviously will support whatever the, you know, the, the group thinks is best. And so I just, I just think there's, there's a, there's a side on each, there's, there's points on each side of it, but, you know, I, I do feel like, you know, supporting our teachers and our, you know, parents and all of our administrators, it is very important. And I do see the need for the medical part of that, just to make sure that, you have a period of time before you, you know, are going to travel. And that also allows some people, if they're going to be traveling, they can get COVID testing and, you know, not be in contact with anybody for a few days.
It's that flexibility and it's that relief. It's like you say, it's not a break, we're still learning, but it's a little different. Couple of people have expressed like what this would mean for them. Like they, right now, their parents are watching their children every day. Now they can let their parents have a couple of days off while they, I mean, it's, it's that whole spirit of giving thanks and just, it's a ripple effect of all those things that can happen. You're still working from home, your student, you, you know, your children are doing their learning in the other room, you're teaching in this room, but you're able to keep an eye on them and you might free up a parent. So I mean, there's just so many different aspects of it that we've considered that we think this is a good recommendation. And it's only those few days and we think it's a good idea, so.
Okay. And so do we, do we, so we're changing the school calendar, I guess, to say it's a remote day?
We're, we're not really going to change the school calendar. I'm just going to, I, my plan was to just put something out to, to say what that is because I think, similar to calling a snow day or changing a PE day, I think we're just saying this is, this is what will look like, those days will be for.
You want to vote for this or?
I put it on there as a vote if you feel, you know, I, I said it that way, we felt that we wanted to vote to support it.
I don't think it's funny we need to not vote it, so.
I was just going to say, I think just.
All right, I got it. What's your question?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a little silly, but it just bears, bears asking. We have great communication going at the parents, but is there any chance that there will be some one, two, three families that might not realize there's been this change? That, you know, is that something we need to worry about?
About here, we may show up.
Yeah. I think, I think it'll be, you know, similar to what you see on a, on a snow day. I mean, I would trust that there'll be, you know, there'll be communication and plenty of reminders leading into that day as well as my, you know, I would put out the, the message to everyone tonight, ahead of this, that you have a full two weeks to prepare. And then we would put out reminders, I probably would do it either myself or each principal prior to each day that week, just to remind that everyone is in for remote. And also to communicate to the expectation, this is not a vacation, that we expect this, you know, attendance will be taken and everyone has the expectations of full learning on these days. And that will be a reminder every day, similar to any kind of snow day, you know, where we would remind them each day. And I, and I will say on some snow days, there's always a day where one student shows up at a school and, you know, the buildings, as I said, will be open and we'll be able to direct those students safely home if that does, if that does happen.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the change to the Thanksgiving and week of Christmas.
I'll make a motion to amend the current school calendar to allow for the remote learning for the days preceding Thanksgiving and the days preceding a winter break.
I'll second.
Well said.
Yep.
Roll call vote. Denise?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass is four to zero. Okay, civics project update.
Thank you. So tonight, typically, this is about when I would give you the update on the MCAS scores from last spring, so I can say they were all fantastic. There was no testing last spring. But I did think this was an important piece to update on. So as a, you know, as a part of the, the chapter 296 of the Act of 2018, there was a civics project that's proposed for all students in eighth grade and also in high school. The way we've approached this in North Reading is to have our seniors who are in the civics and government class conducting products, projects as well as our eighth grade. So I, I'm very pleased to say I've met with Mr. Colleen as well as the, the principals of the middle school and the high school, and our Catherine Jones and Matthew Osteen are, are two leaders of the social studies department at the middle school, high school. We are, we are very well positioned, you know, with respect to many other districts, I think, in being proactive in addressing this this year. There is an expectation, despite COVID, despite everything, that this gets addressed this year. And I think we're going to have a great, a great idea and great program. Obviously, it's going to look very different this year. So the first step that we're trying to look at, and we already have a tremendous community service program at the high school. So we're trying to reconcile, first of all, the differences between community service and a civics project, and also not losing some of the great aspects of what we already have with our community service. I think, you know, I think it's, the civics project is different. It's a little bit deeper. You're not running a canned food drive. You are, you know, developing and getting to the root cause of, of hunger. You know, and coming up with a much larger system. So it's a much deeper, much more involved project. But there's still a need for volunteers. There's still a need for kids to volunteer at the TOPPS program or whatever those different activities are in town, and we want to make sure that both continue and thrive. And so in addition to that, there's challenges to all of it, community service and civics projects in COVID, because we have to maintain safety. So I think our leaders and our teacher leaders have done a fantastic job coming up with what this will look like this year. The DECE is going to update their guidance in November, so what I shared with you is the, the original guidance. But they're going to have some amended guidance to help us see through what this will look like next year. There are also specific elements here, so just to walk through quickly what's on page 10 of this document, but students will do and examine their self and their civic identity. They'll identify an issue. They will research and investigate. They will develop an action plan, and then they actually take action. And then they reflect and they showcase. So at the middle school, obviously, it's going to be much more scaffold and supportive. We're going to strongly encourage working in teams and in group projects. But it is important to, to do a few things. At the district level, we want to make sure that we've looked at all of our policies. So I'm working with the policy subcommittee in the next few meetings to start to review any policies we have around students not just participating in research, but actually conducting research, interacting, students interacting with the media, students interacting with the public and civic government. So I think there's something to look at there to make sure that the students are supported and protected. And also, I think it's just important, and the reason I put it on the agenda tonight is to make sure that it's clear to the committee, you know, that a lot of these topics will be student-driven, and it is coming from the school, but it's also coming from the students. And so there may be projects or ideas or questions coming out that are, that are different than what we've seen in the past. Because students are going to be identifying areas in the community that need improvement, and really part of the assignment is to take action. So we're going to see maybe in a way that we've never seen before, students getting involved in the community, which I think is, which I think is fantastic. So an example of what, you know, I think an exemplary civics project is, and one thing that's interesting too is the document, and we're going to be sharing this through the faculty meetings at the schools, because yes, a lot of it does live in the social studies civic classes, but it's really interdisciplinary. And, you know, you, your civics project could be about recycling and renewable energy, which now means you're partnering with your science teachers to do research, and it could be connected to a class or project in science. It could be something like what happened in our performing arts program with maskers. And I think, again, part of the guidance is like, look at existing programs and projects that already exist and what can we build on. What we were able to see our students articulate about the haunted walkthrough activity where they spoke to all of the appropriate safety officers and fire department and, you know, everyone, including the board of health and making recommendations, on top of everything else in COVID, and making sure everything checked out. But we actually had the students figure out who those folks were, go to those meetings, present to the board of health. I mean, to do that at age 15, 17, 18 is, is really taking a leap, you know, in their, in their civic development. So that's, those are the kind of ideas and projects that are out there. But I think it's just important to, to publicly state at this time of the year that there will be some topics and some conversations that will be coming from the school. I think that obviously these projects need to be, you know, nonpartisan. And I think we can do a great job directing that. And I think we can really guide students with that way, but then there's also, there's a question of nonpartisan, and then there's a question of what is perceived to be political or partisan, and what isn't, right? So I think there is, there is a potential that we, we also have to be careful that we're not shutting down ideas that are good ideas because they could be controversial. So there's going to be a slight element of that. And I just think it's important to discuss that publicly, that there's going to be some ideas that are being talked about this year that either are supported and maybe, you know, out in the public that, that get questioned, or maybe they get redirected and that gets questioned. So these things can happen. I think it's just good to be out ahead of that with the discussion here. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer it.
Okay. Anybody have, have any questions, sir? Janine?
I actually read the whole brief thing. A lot of very interesting things came out of it. The political thing, I was kind of nervous about, and I guess, you know, it comes down to, one, the teacher, and then two, the students, and, you know, how they're able to decide, is it political, is it not? I read some of the case studies that were done, phenomenal. I mean, very, very well thought out, so. Interesting, I'd like to see in the future what comes of it.
There's not, thank, thank you for taking that time. And there's not, there's bits of support in professional development. You know, I've been to some of these, and I know our leaders have been as well. But no one's done it yet. So there's still a lot, you know, all the examples are based upon theory and, you know, so I think try to pull this together and, and put it out there. There's going to be some, some learning curve to it all. But I think our teachers are very, very well aware of and that that was part of what we talked about in our meetings recently, is about how do we respectfully and politely engage the students in a discussion about whether this is the right to do now, what, what the outcomes are going to be, and, you know, without them feeling like their values or their ideas aren't important, just because they may be controversial. So it's, it's very, and that's really what civic discussion is all about.
I also, if you don't mind, some of the extracurricular clubs actually kind of fall into this. I'm thinking, is this Massa Harvest, then there's the one that they go to the elderly, not housing, like the nursing home?
Yeah.
And they, you know, do cards, or they sing, or they participate and stuff. That is almost, it's like, you know, could be part of, part of that, but they've taken it upon themselves to do. So I just, I thought it was very interesting.
It is, and it's, it's interesting too, because there's a few clubs that are coming before you in the next few weeks that, before they come forward though, I'm going to have the discussion about whether, is this a club or does this just become someone's project? Because part of what the project has to be, it has to be new and it has to be sustainable. So it can't just be joining a club and doing the work. You actually have to research it, come up with it. So, you know, starting a club that does X, Y, Z, that is more of a project as opposed to participating in it, right? So it, it always has to be that level. So the example that they use is, you know, someone starts a food pantry, you can't just then take that over the next year. You would have to, you can't just, you know, replicate that. You have to do something different. But at the same time, I think part of a, a project is that it should be sustainable, and so students would be able to, so there's, there's a lot of different things that we're working out right now to consider. But I do think that that's very interesting, you know, how we, how we look at our existing clubs and really make them student-run, and, you know, I, I think that's going to be a big part of this conversation. Great point.
Chris, any comment?
You know, I'd, I'd kind of double up on, on Janine's phrase. I think this is a, this is exactly the kind of direction that I think we should be going in. And I could kind of wax poetic, but I won't. But it's a great idea. I'm, I'm, I'm really glad to see us going this way.
Great. So your point about the political. There are so many issues that may come up in this that in a vacuum are not political. Things that some people may think are more important than others, but they're not inherently political. But of course, in our polarized times, they tend to be associated with one side or the other. And that's unfortunate. It, it seems like, and there may be some that feel are certainly judgment of the, of the administrators and the, and the faculty who are working on this, you know, a general support. But it, it seems like there is an opportunity to, to encourage how, not, not only that you guys engage with the, the students on this, but that the students are, you know, how does they engage with the public on it in a way that is not confrontational or not, or isn't perceived as being confrontational or political? And that, that to me is could be a huge benefit to this whole thing. So, and I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that as I say, there are certainly some issues that you may just need to stay away from, but other, otherwise, I, I hope that you don't shy away from too much and that give them an opportunity to try to figure some of that stuff out.
And, and present it in such a way, like you said, that it's not confrontational, that can actually achieve progress for the cause that you're.
And how to, how to, how to build support for something that maybe someone is, is a, you know, reflexively not going to support.
I think that's a huge lesson for, for a lot of folks to learn. So that's exactly what, what we're doing. So I think, like I said, setting the stage for it tonight with the conversation that helps us frame it forward, I think is a good idea.
My thoughts on this are, I was thinking a little bit different. I think the page that I thought was most useful was, was the page that talked about individual versus small group versus whole class. And I know you mentioned that you guys were, you were going to be encouraging groups. I would almost require groups, you know, I mean, I, I'd be worried, number one, if everybody's doing the same sort of topic and multiple people are going to the same, you know, person in town, or recycling committee or whatever, and you have seven different students that are doing it in one year. But also civic projects are about people doing things together. And so I almost think it should, it should only be allowed to be groups or whole classes and that do it. I think it's a great, a great thing, and I mean, the change can start wherever, and I think the one, the one thing that came to mind when I was reading about civics, the civics projects were Mighty Meredith Project in, in North Reading, you know, where Meredith Casey had something happen, and she did this, and she got an organization off the ground and running, and you know, that was one, one student, one child that did that, with, with her family's support, obviously, and, you know, that's a great example, and you know, I almost, I would almost want her to be, you know, a speaker sometimes, as, as some of us know how to do that, but.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, but I would really encourage this to be grouped more than individuals, or even a whole class. I just feel like it, everything about it lends itself to being a, a group activity.
Yeah, I think you're certainly going to see that at, at middle school, and I think it's, it's being discussed that way at the high school as well. But you're right, those, those kind of experiences like Mighty Meredith are fantastic, and what an amazing accomplishment for that, for the individuals that have done it. The idea now is that every student, through being required, will have that same type of experience. And then, you know, the, the trick with groups is always, you know, making sure that it's equally distributed, who does what, who takes the lead, you know? And so that's the balance. But I do think it does make a lot of sense, because I agree that the teamwork aspect of this is a huge piece of it.
I, I, I like to think a lot of people are going to have the same thing, and I guess you could have different ideas or different projects on the same, like recycling, but I think you might get something a little bit more robust and well thought out and better chances of actually continuing if you are working together.
Sure.
And then everybody working, you know, their, their own angle for the same project, but. Okay, so we don't need a vote on it? That's just a discussion?
This is just, I just, and, and, you know, I, I'll probably have in the spring students come in and talk a little bit of what they've done this year. It'll be a nice, you know, bookend to the, to the discussion.
Okay. The most exciting part of the meeting, we're going to, policies. Janine and Chris, you're turning it over to you. Don't worry, I can do something, Janine.
You do? Goodness. Chris, I'll let you take the lead, huh, Sam?
You beat me to it. I was going to say, I was going to let you take the lead, Janine. Oh, no. Yeah, only, I didn't have the, the document pulled up. Why don't you pull that up? We went through, it was, I mean, really, it's, it's, it's like, there was more of the technical side of updating the legal language surrounding Title IX and updating some of the terminology to support that. And, and that's, that's kind of it. There weren't, I hope me if I'm wrong, Dr. Daly, I don't think we ended up making any, any dramatic changes other than really putting in Mr. Colleen's name and, and trying to clear up pertaining to his new position.
Sure. And just to, just to make it clear, these are federal laws changed. These are updates to reflect the changes to federal law, and they were drafted by our council. There were some questions that were raised that I did bring up to the council about trying to have a common definition of, of different items. There are different, there are differences between state and federal law, and some of the definitions, you know, this, we do have two different pieces of advice on what that definition should look like, but we're going to try and reconcile that language as, as it was presented. But essentially, what I believe was clarified to me is that it's really policy AC that needs to get adopted here, and then a lot of the other pieces can be updated and revised more as the procedures from there. So we.
So, so it's difficult, and the procedures are, are sort of an addendum to the policy or a second, right, that would also be approved though, right? I mean, it's, I, I didn't go back and look at the, at the, at the manual, but it, you know, it might be policy C, and then there's an AC, you know, R or something that, that is the procedure. That would also be approved, or I think we've improved that in the past, I'm not.
Yeah, we can clarify that. The way it was presented to me is that possibly not everything, you know, changes the handbook things, like some of the things can be changed a little bit. As long as the governing policy is still there, that some of those other pieces that are under them can be changed a little bit more easily. And then we certainly have policies that, you know, as people change positions and roles, certain aspects need to get updated every year and the like.
Yeah, it seems like that.
So some of what I, I share with you, four documents there in the packet, some of them are more like the handbook language, right? So it's a little bit different, but I just wanted to share everything that was there to be updated. So there are, there are some pieces that we do need to add. I believe we do have some changes now based on our, our most recent training. Because we, we have to identify, it's no longer just one person, well, there's still one person who's a Title IX coordinator, but now there, there are four or five other roles that need to be assigned as a part of our process. And it's not just, you know, or his or her design needs. We have a decision maker, we have an investigator, we have an appeal, we have a, an informal resolution coordinator. So we, we are going to assign all those pieces in our process, and and, and once that's approved. So that will be in there for the final reading, that you'll see that all as delineated, and then it will be shared. And our training notes and materials also will be posted in accordance with the law. So we've done that. This law has been effective, went into effect this summer. It, you know, at the moment, I will say these changes to the laws look to be that they'll be here for a little bit. There was, you know, 17 attorneys general filed a lawsuit to try to not have these take place. I will go on the record as saying there, there are pieces of this that I am not really in favor of. I don't think, I, I, I don't think that they worked very well for, for victims that are coming forward, and I don't think that they worked very well for, you know, I, I don't think that they worked very well for their intended purposes for K-12. I think they were written more with the higher ed in mind a little bit. And I think there are some limitations, and I, I understand, I guess what I'm saying is I, I can understand why there was a lawsuit filed by attorneys general, including Massachusetts. But at the moment, this is the law of the land, and this is why we're updating the, what's in there.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I was a little, I was a little confused about what was what. Like I, I didn't touch the procedures because I felt like they were drafted by lawyers. And I just see the links to them, so I was wondering what we have to approve, if we have to approve just the policy and the handbook language, and then the procedures are part of that, and it's just a reference to it? Or if you want an approval on the procedures itself too?
Yeah, I would say, I would say AC, yeah, the policy and the handbook language could be approved if we're first reading. And then I probably, yeah, I'll make those changes. It's just, I just wanted to share everything with you, but I think it's just policy AC and then the handbook language, that would be updated.
Why don't we start with policy AC?
Before we go into that, on the policy AC, on the very fourth paragraph. Yes, it's actually the first, the first thing. It says, "The super tenet shall adopt and publish one or more grievance procedures or address and report discrimination for aspect retaliation and the blah, 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 blah." Do we have an ACR?
Currently?
Yes.
Not sure.
Because it's basically, if we approve this reading, then according to this paragraph, the first sentence, we, either you need to come up with one, or we need to. we either you need to come up with one or we need to.
What about the other policies? Are there civil rights grievance procedure?
Well, and that's what I was wondering, are there going to be then A C R one and A C R two?
Well, I'm looking at the manual now and policy A C is actually the school district organization. So I'm confused by.
Well, the, the, yeah, M S also has different letters for their.
Ours are, ours are G A and G A R. So I believe we do it out. Okay.
So this will be policy G A is what we'd be adopting?
So I can, I can pull up those other. We looked at them in the policies. Actually, I did put them in the packet. I can try to get on that. I don't have here on there now, Rich. I believe it's G A. G A is, it's actually a section.
It must be G A A or.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. G A A, G A A, B.
Nondiscrimination is, is that what we're talking about?
And discrimination and harassment?
And harassment, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's actually G A A A or something.
Yeah.
A, triple A.
Yeah. And to your question, Janine, there is a G A A R.
J C A R. And so we have two policies. We have one for students and one for staff. And we would probably do, we would probably do it that same way. And if there's the same procedure, it's just sort of addressed and it's in two different places in the book. We would, we would be replacing all the existing to to G C A, G A A A and then J C A R. And then there's also a corresponding one for staff.
We're following it home is the exciting part of the meeting.
So I guess I, I guess I'm just thinking that if I'm going to vote to approve a policy, I want to have it in front of me that has the right that has the right designation on it and I know where it's going to go and what it's replacing. So I feel like maybe we should hold off and and we should be ready to go in the manual, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Well, this is just the first reading. So.
Right, but the second reading has to be the same.
Are we going to G A E or A A C?
Sorry?
Are we going to then draft it under R lettering or change it to A C? I guess it's kind of my question.
If I'm saying that the document that we have in front of us says A C and that's clearly not fitting into our, our structure.
Yeah.
Whatever, right or wrong. And I feel more comfortable voting on a policy that fit, that is the final thing that's going to go right into the manual with the right letter designation. Okay.
I I don't disagree with Rich, actually. I mean, I was, I was wondering if it was a little bit premature. I think putting the title on there, but also some of the references inserting the link, like, again, some of the references like Janine was mentioning about, you know, what are the procedures or what's the, what's the procedure that's the regulation that's with the policy? Kind of getting that all together. What I would suggest, though, is that maybe we don't do a first reading tonight. Maybe we just see if there's any specific comments we had on things.
Or get it out of there, yeah.
Just to do that. And then we can maybe very quickly at the next meeting do the first reading and then do another reading after that.
My only concern is that this is in effect since August and I want to make sure that it gets online. We need to update this. So we're, because of COVID and other things, we, we're a little delayed. So it's, in effect, it's replacing the current Title IX. You know, everything that's in there now needs to come out and it's going to replace it.
If you think there's a time urgency to it, I'd be, again, I mean, I could, we can at least put it up and you can vote against it if you want, Rich, but I mean.
No, I, I appreciate you.
On the second reading, can we amend it from A C to the current G A A, blah, 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 but the wording is okay?
Yeah, I think typically it's an A C. I'm not sure why ours is a G A E. I don't know if anyone knows the history of why it's lettered as it is. I would have to research that a little bit. But.
For first first reading, why don't we just do, if we're worried about the timing, first reading, why don't we just do the content of it? Understanding that we need to know where it's fitting into the policy. And again, I, like I said in the beginning, I want to make sure I'm very clear about like the civil rights grievance procedure. Is that a regulation that's going in somewhere? Or is that just a reference to something else? Like where does all of this lie? Like if I want to go find the civil rights grievance procedure, is that in our, is that in the school committee policies? Is that on the district website somewhere? Like.
Yeah, so some of this is on the website posted, right, as the, as the grievance procedure. Some of it is a policy, but some of it is handbook.
I just think before, before we do a final version of this, even if we, you know, if we do the first reading of this, I think we need to, you know, have all the links put in. I think we need to have labels on exactly what's there. And then get very clear about where this is going. I don't think it's that much different than if we, you know, if there was an error and we said we'd accept it with, with that on there. And so I I do agree with Rich, like if there wasn't any time urgency to it, like I would just say, just go back and clean it up and then come back again. But if you feel like we should get to it, now I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned with this. Like if we, if we do a second read, we can clean it up for the second one. I just want to get it up yesterday, just because if we have something out there now, I want to make sure that we're following the right procedure. It's very clear.
Okay.
So so why don't we do one at a time? Janine, do you want to start with the, or Chris, I think Janine told you you were encouraged with that. Do you want to, do you want to lead us through the nondiscrimination and harassment, which was labeled file A C, that's going to be something else?
E, yep. Hey, we're going to trade off, we'll do, we'll share tonight. Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I would, I mean, excuse me, Dr. Daly kind of explained the, the bulk of it, but just, just to do you want to read into the record basically what it is?
Well, why don't we, why don't we have a motion? Why don't we, why don't we have a motion a second and then we can discuss anything that is, you know, might.
Yeah. I move that we accept as a first read the nondiscrimination and harassment policy labeled right now as file A C.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so discussion. The first point was, we need to clarify where it's going into the policies?
In accordance with our policy lettered, yes.
Correct. The second point, which I agree with also, is Janine pointing out that if there's a grievance procedure that is being published, that we should add that reference in. I have no other questions or concerns on this one. Anybody else?
I do not.
Okay. So with that.
No.
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
I was agreeing.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I meant I as well. So that was for first reading for zero. Now.
Thank you for that. So again, just we're building a ship as we're flying a little bit here and it's building a plane as we're flying. And I guess we're building a ship as we're flying. That feels more right. So but it's just important for us to keep moving forward. So we'll get those items corrected for sure.
Okay. And so I feel like the, the two procedures are references in both of these, both the handbook and the other one. So why don't we, why don't we take the handbook language next, Title IX of the Education Amendment of nineteen seventy-two?
Yep.
In the Student and Employee Handbook. So Chris, do you want to make a motion on this one?
I move that we accept for a first read, the Title IX of the Education Amendment of nineteen seventy-two, update to our policy.
Have a second?
Yes, and just for clarification, this is for the handbook.
Correct. So the student and the employee have a, two different.
Yeah.
Give that.
Second. Okay, discussion on this one. My only comment was, in paragraph number one, the first line talks about on the basis of sex. The second line talks about on the basis of sex harassment based on gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, pregnancy, and pregnancy status. And the third line goes back to just sex. And I just wonder if the language, the more inclusive language should be in all three of them or or somehow, it just seems like.
And that's what I was referring to earlier. So that, that was brought up at the discussion. And so I brought that back to the council. They said they'd go and take a look at it. Different laws cite different things. And some of the laws don't extend to certain protected classes and categories. And so having that one definition that includes, let's say homelessness, we also have genetic identity, genetic information in some of our definitions. There's some question about whether we can have those in all of these policies. So we're going to, we're going to try and work on that with the council to have some updates.
Yeah, it just seems like, well, there's something you you can't harass about, but you can discriminate or not hire them for. And it just seems like, you know, just because the law makes a minimum standard, I don't know that it means we shouldn't have a more inclusive standard than number four. So that's my only, my only concerns about that. Those three, like those three.
So it did, I mean, it is a little bit complicated because there's certain things that we can't begin our investigation on. And it doesn't then fall into this policy or procedure. It gets, it gets funneled out. So we, we do have to be, I don't know that it can be one size fits all for that. So that's what they're, that's what they're going to look into.
Yeah. At the end of the day, the language, yeah. The requirement to meet the government's or the legal requirement is one thing. Yeah, any addition, any policy that we want to put in place would have to be like a, I would think a set aside, you know, a separate order. Not refer to Title IX.
Well, if if nothing else, I mean, they just, to me, it calls that out by putting it in the middle of that. I would almost like put that other definition either later on or first, you know, just so it's not.
You know, I think, I think some of, I think some of it certainly can't be adjusted, so to be clear.
That one. My only other, my only, only other comment on the third paragraph begins upon receipt. And number four, I just think the school district should be capitalized. If you capitalize, district are out. So. Other than that, so I guess I won't have any changes on the first comment. It may, understand that maybe there'll be additional changes later on. But do, do other people have any concerns with anything? And obviously, we have to click in the links here before we
Exactly.
Do the final approval of anything?
No, I'm, that's, that's fine. This isn't quite the same yet. I think it's.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. We'll do a roll call vote on this motion. Chris?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I meant I as well, for zero. Now, do we want to do motions on the two procedures?
I would venture to hold off just so that we can maybe get a little bit more, if it's not an urgent thing. For the reasons discussed earlier, one, having clarification that the wording should be the same throughout. And to find out, do a little bit of investigative work to find out where the lettering should fall within our policy. Is it, you know, going to be following along A C or is it going to fall where Rich said, closer into the G A section?
Yeah.
Are you okay with holding up on the procedures or regulations for a little bit?
I think the most important thing is to get A C there. Okay.
So why don't we pass over on that aspect of it and we can take up first reading of that and take up a second reading of the policy next time.
That's, that works very good.
Okay. Moving on to school cancellation and delayed procedures.
So I just wanted to share again, and I have this on as a vote as well, similar to the last. It's a slight change this year and I did communicate this out with the committee and I did share with the community in advance of what ended up being our first snowfall of the year. But we did add into our toolbox this year the, a remote snow day, which we did discuss earlier tonight with Sophia on the call as well. You know, the, the one thing I wanted to raise publicly is that, you know, folks will say, you know, we've taken so much away from students, they should, still should be able to have a snow day where they can make snowmen and and bake cookies and do all that. And I completely agree with that. And I'm not saying that we're never going to have a snow day again, but I think to have this as a tool in our toolbox, let's say that there's multiple snow days. Let's say that there is, like I mentioned earlier, an icy storm. Where instead of doing a ninety minute delay, we say everyone stay home and we start school day in five. I mean, it just, I think it makes a lot of sense to be able to do that and to have that at our disposal as we need it. You know, why would I ever call a delay on a Wednesday when the elementary schools are getting out in the middle of the day, right? So this way you're remote day, everybody's remote, and the learning continues. I just think it makes a lot of sense. So we've already put it out there. So I'm hoping that it gets supported in public officially. But I, I did want to bring that forth tonight for discussion if anyone had any comments for us to consider.
I strongly disagree. I'm kidding. I, I have no comments or issues. And people want to make snowmen, they can make it after the school day's over.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfectly fine with it.
I mean, it, it, it all ends up being your discretion in any event. So, you know, you can sort of, as you say, sort of work that whatever seems to make the most sense in the situation. I mean, people, one of the things that it avoids is that those cusp days where you have to call school, but then that by noon it's sunny and the streets are clear and, you know, you avoid those kind of ones where where everyone's complaining because, like, you call a lot of school, you know, why'd you call school? And, yeah, it turned out to be great.
So you're saying Patrick has a very easy job now that we have this problem?
Yeah, it's been, you know, it's been.
It's been a pretty easy job for you.
The whole, the whole thing's been very easy. Yeah, no, I mean.
In fact, I, I think people will still be, you know, wanting kids in school. And our purpose is going to be in person whenever we can. But I think this is just, you know, something we can use to make, to make some sense as needed throughout the year. And it's, you know, it's being listed, you know, it was approved by the Department of Ed for this year only. And, you know, we did talk about it. I've talked about it basically all since the summer when he, when it was first presented. But we officially were given the clearance a few weeks ago to do something like this for this year only. But I think it only makes sense and it reinforces, you know, all the, all the learning that we're able to do in hybrid that we have been able to shift at different times and it's been successful. And I think it's something that we can use this year effectively. So.
I think, I mean, I think it's silly. Kids are going to be home to not have a count. Because frankly, we can do it and it's just going to extend school longer and
Yeah.
we're all going to want to be out at the end of the year. So.
Just to clarify, too, we wouldn't be doing this if there was an extreme power outage and we couldn't do that. We're not planning necessarily the quote unquote lizard bag where the students are doing some asynchronous activity on that day. The idea is that they would be logging in, teachers would be interacting with them, would be an engaging school day just delivered remotely. So similar to what we're proposing for, for the next, before the Thanksgiving.
Okay. Do we have?
I, I will say that we, we have the same system in place for the last few years in Wakefield when I was teaching. And surprisingly, the people that liked it the least were the seniors because they felt it robbed them of their, their free snow days. I think we have more underperformance within our district and it'll work out.
You can, you can, you can descend on behalf of the seniors, seniors if you'd like, Chris.
But, yeah, in the honor of this, no, no, it's, 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 we've got the technology. There's no, I, I think there's no real reason not to do this. It makes too much sense.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the school cancellation and delay procedures?
I will move to approve the school cancellation and delay procedures for this year.
I'll second. Okay, roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I meant I as well. That was for zero. I will tell you Diane. I don't know why. Okay, moving on. There's no minutes to approve tonight. Budget update. Mr. Connolly?
Yes, thank you. So there is a budget update. Not a lot of new information here from the September report. But not, not a lot of changes with the, the line items, but as they're, as they're fresher, certainly purchased a lot of supplies and equipments, need at the start of the year, all related to additional needs based on the COVID-19 environment, that we prepared to reopen our schools. Despite a lot of these new expenses that popped up, I do believe we are in, you know, solid financial standing. Many, if not all, of these expenses for the P P E, cleaning, sanitation, computer devices, various H vac upgrades, window repairs, et cetera, that were incurred across all five schools in the district are being able to be charged in front of rent, in reopening rent, you know, all these essentials rent that we received and secured by the beginning of September. Additional supplies and equipment that are needed beyond these expenses that we have momentarily charged to the general fund, we do anticipate working. We do anticipate working closely with the town finance director and the town administrator to generalize, uh, these expenses to the KADAC funding that the town of North Reading has received or hopes of its expenses. Um, so on the bottom of the report, as we reflect in the September report, we may see some of these expenses. Um, I do know that the town finance director, Elizabeth Rourke, was in the process of drawing down funds from this account through the federal process, and we do have a conference call tomorrow to just kind of, um, make sure that we're on the same page of how these journalizations will occur. But we certainly anticipate that the funds reflected, um, at, on the bottom of page one of the report, um, at the bottom of page, it indicates COVID-19 expenses that those will eventually be transferred over to the KADAC funding. Um, on the, on the payroll side of the, um, budget, I think we're certainly, um, as I expressed in September, had a need to fill long-term substitutes. Uh, we, you know, we certainly don't expect that having a significant impact on the substitute budget. We have hired several new positions, including building substitutes, um, in some cases instructional learning gates or remote learning gates. Um, to help, in the active kindergarten program, in our elementary schools. We did hire a photo nurse, custodial staff, and a technology technician to help deploy the new devices, all which we anticipate being able to be charged to the federal reopening or technology central grant. Um, some of the other line items, there's a balance in the administration line, I spoke about time, maybe due to the delay in equipment of the distance to attend it. Um, there's a balance in other lines, especially education transportation payroll line, now failing to, to as many needed hours from the drivers themselves, also not transporting too many students. Um, the food service program I, I spoke of in September, I spoke of it earlier, so we continue to do. We, we tend to increase participation in both the grab and go, as well as the in-school, uh, program. Again, everything is continuously increased until the end of the year. Unfortunately, I did get confirmation that the fifty-five thousand dollar grant that I applied for, it was not, uh, was not awarded. So, um, I am working, and one of the WSC, the town officials on is to try to make some of those startup expenses that were certainly COVID, um, also part of the KADAC funding. Um, certainly there was, um, equipment and, uh, flexing glass and startup packaging and, uh, material that needs to be purchased. Um, but, you know, really at this point, I think, I think despite, um, the situation that we were, we were due to a drastic reopening, um, I think we developed some good relationships with vendors, supply vendors, PPE vendors to get the material that we need, uh, at a competitive price quickly. Um, and again, the biggest, I would say the biggest, um, volatility or risk is just around the special revenue accounts, which, um, we're working on our thing, but I think at this point, I think we're months in, despite what we've dealt with, I think we are in solid financial status. With that, that being said, I will, I will put any questions.
Could you refresh my memory? What was the grant for the fifty-five that you applied for didn't get? And what was the rationale behind that?
So it's, it really, it was a, um, food service emergency feeding grant through the state. Um, it's highly competitive, and you may have seen Governor Baker kind of doing some press conferences, speaking that they were awarding this grant on a rolling basis to many, uh, it wasn't just for school districts, it was for any, any food shelters, pantries out there that were opening up emergency feeding sites. Uh, school districts were ineligible, and it really was just that it was just too competitive was, was the, was the rationale. And I think they, they maybe focused on some other kind of statewide feeding sites or what we were looking to do to start up the school. So I think, you know, some districts, I think, um, kind of worked some of those expenses into that reopening grant. Most of the, majority of reopening grant went towards kind of an instructional need and, um, you know, uh, building, evacuating, upgrading, technology, and teacher technicians, um, additional photo nurse and so forth. So we were, we went that route and, um, originally confident that, um, the funding will be able to be part of the, of this KADAC, um, process.
Any other questions? Mary, Ron, Ron to staffing, Dale?
I wanted to share some new hires that happened since the last time we communicated. Cynthia Wilkerson, special education teacher, long-term substitute. Michelle Rosenthal, general paraprofessional, and Pam Ellis, remote learning support assistant, is one of the new positions we just spoke about, called the bachelor school. Middle school Benjamin Kelleher, special education paraprofessional, the long-term sub. Janice Wilk, a special ed paraprofessional, long-term sub. At high school, we've hired Michael Fitzpatrick as the building custodian. At district level, we have hired Tasha Wilder as the HR liaison. This is a new position replacing Maggie Dalton, who retired after twenty-two years of service to the district, and she's a lifelong hornet. And we, um, if you didn't see the sign as we were driving in, uh, on sixty-two, we did have a nice little tribute to Maggie, you know, there for her many years of service to the district. She was our, uh, payroll, she was senior accountant in the district for many years. So we've taken the position in a slightly different direction. Tasha comes in with, uh, experience at the higher education level, um, at MIT and Meramec as an HR liaison, and she's been a great fit in our department. So we wish Maggie the best and, uh, welcome these new folks into the district.
Wonderful. I welcome all of them, and especially Mrs. Wilk, she's gonna be working with a particular, uh, student that I, I, I.
Happening right today.
Um, there's a donation, Mr. McGowan.
Yes, uh, I have a small handful here. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a generous donation of one thousand dollars from Hibo Shang and Yan Wu Shang to be used at principal's discretion in North Reading Middle School.
Thank you.
Kind of new discussion. Roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye as well?
Aye.
After four zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a generous donation of one thousand dollars from Hibo Shang and Yan Wu Shang to be used at principal's discretion in North Reading High School.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote again. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
An aye as well, after four zero.
I know.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from the North Reading High School class of twenty twenty to fund the purchase of a new electric sign at the high school.
Excellent.
Roll call vote again. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
An aye as well, after four zero.
That's, that's, that's your leftover money?
Yes.
Wait, that's, that's the higher amount that you did, isn't it? Or is it? Maybe it's not, and maybe the circumstances would have affected it.
Right, it was similar. I think there had been randomly a thousand, fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to subcommittees. Before I just go into the different, um, updates, I'd like to thank Mr. McGowan. The, uh, select board member, Rich Wallner, reached out to me asking if somebody would be interested in speaking with, um, UMass is doing their research study on aging communities and possibly some involvement in, on planning for some intergenerational buildings and planning in the future, and so I reached out to a couple of committee members. And Sir McGowan graciously volunteered to speak with Mr. Wallner and help with that.
Um, thanks for bringing it up, Scott, because I, you know, since I am sort of representing the committee, it's probably good to let everybody know what, what, what is happening. I had a good, a nice long discussion with Mr. Wallner, who has, um, you know, I think come in to his position, I guess, last year with a, you know, a particular vision, uh, about, you know, the need to improve, uh, not just senior services, but just overall, uh, uh, you know, an overall effort to, to improve North Reading as a place that welcomes seniors and, and, and partly, especially in terms of how it impacts the school committee. Um, to try to keep seniors here and not have them, you know, not have folks leave town as soon as their kids graduate from school. Obviously, I'll recognize the financial benefits of that in schools. Um, and so we had a really good discussion, and he's, uh, put me in contact with this group, um, which is the first step from his point of view in terms of, uh, figuring out, figuring out, you know, uh, sort of beginning that process of what will ultimately hopefully just kind of planning.
Thank you for doing that. Um, policy subcommittee met on October twenty-nine. Viviana, do you want to update on that?
Um, not much to say from what we spoke about earlier. It was going over the four, um, things, two of which we did a first reading on and two of which we will do a first reading on.
One, upcoming subcommittee meeting, athletic subcommittee meeting November eighteenth at one PM virtually. Financial subcommittee meeting same day at three thirty PM. Finance planning meeting December first at eight AM. Sorry, I just told you that, Rich, but.
Uh, well, Daly sent out a meeting appointment.
Very good. Uh, but it is eight AM, not eight thirty this time, so. Um, the, for administrator report, Scott Daly, do you have anything?
I have nothing for this.
My, my only question that I forgot to ask earlier, but I'll ask it now that I remember it, but I know last year, uh, one thing that we talked a lot about was when, when services, when we opened again, whether or not there was, that gap has grown between, you know, students that don't need assistance and students that do. I'm just wondering in terms of like special education, like have we seen, you know, more of a need this year? I mean, have we seen that gap grow? Or do we feel like, I, I, I'm just wondering from a special education standpoint, like, have we seen a need for more services for more students, or are we doing, you know, sort of the way we were before? I don't think that's a good question, but I just, it's something I was thinking about.
I, are you saying students that are in the vote?
Well, we were worried, I think, we were worried last year that when we just shut down, we went to full remote for three months, that there was a gap between students that needed services and students that didn't, and that that gap was going to grow. And one thing that we haven't really talked about was, have we seen that that happened? Have we seen that kids fell further behind or more kids need, need additional services? Or do we feel like, you know, people are doing okay and there's no real big, this isn't necessarily a budget question. This is more like, I don't know, how are we doing? I mean, did that gap grow? No, or are we doing okay, so?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a couple of different ways to look at that. I, I will say that, um, we were very concerned last spring, you know, nationally about what this would mean for kids that were out for that period of time. I think our students were very much engaged. It wasn't the same, but they were engaged to the point that I have not heard across the board from principals or teachers that, you know, oh my goodness, my students are so much further behind than they typically are in September, October, November. We haven't heard that. I think it's definitely different. And, um, you know, we've prioritized, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about what needs to be prioritized, what can go. You know, we, we had to do that anyway with a hundred and seventy days opposed to a hundred and eighty days, right? But I can, I can report that I'm not hearing consistently that the gaps are huge and we can't fill them and this and that. I think with special education services, there are certainly some compensatory services that are needed, that, that we need to do to, to fill gaps or to support students, and I do think there are many students that are having, you know, any, any time remotely is difficult. Um, and that's for special education, and that's for a whole variety of, of different needs, and that's why we're really trying to address that with, with students. But I, I'm not getting the sense that certainly the, the diagnostic test that we've given, um, I have not heard any feedback. But I, I will inquire a little bit more, and maybe I can have, um, some other folks present as well on this. But I have not heard that across the board, you know, students are behind. You know, I'm not hearing that. So I, I, I feel that that is something I would hear quite a bit of. You know, even as we talk about the quarter ending coming up and working on report cards, I'm not hearing that all of it needs to be changed and reallocated because we're not gonna be able to meet something or kids weren't ready for fourth grade, they're still working at third grade. I'm not hearing that. I think, I think our students progressed. I think that's a testament to our teachers and also to our parents and families that they kept learning, going through, through the, um, through the, you know, spring and, and obviously in the summer. I think everyone was proactive with this and kept it going.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's on my mind more than anything right now, just because I attended a webinar today that CPAC was, or it wasn't by CPAC, but it was about ABLE account, and it just was on my head and, and in my, in my mind. And, you know, I, I wonder if even in future, maybe in a future meeting, you know, if anyone ever wanted to, you know, present on kind of special education is going. I, I think it's been an important part for us to understand, and, you know, especially when budget is coming up, just understanding there's a budgetary impact on it, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that, that's the first that was crossing my mind as I was saying that. You know, we, we had some very good discussions today at our administrative council with some outside of the box ideas that I, I really, I think we have to start going there. I think we can get, you know, we, we're finally over this quote unquote reopening hurdle. And now we're trying to think about, okay, what can we do differently? If we can't bring everybody back all at once, how can we be outside of the box, get more kids in person in different ways? So we, we threw a lot of ideas out there, and I'm not gonna discuss them yet because they're still in that early stage. But I think we're going to need to come up with some creative ways to, uh, to get kids back more in person for those. Cause that, that in-person connection makes all the difference for some kids, and it motivates them and it inspires them. And we have to try to get that as much as we possibly can. So how can we support those students on their remote days? The fact that we're in three and two is, like I said, that is better than, uh, you know, you know, obviously five days is what we're going for. But on those two days each week that they're out, how do we help them out and get them what they need? So we're gonna keep talking about that.
Has that, has that, has organizations all started yet? I mean, maybe at the high school, but maybe at the middle school, I don't think they have, or?
Yeah, so everyone, you know, it's a little bit delayed. The first phase was just figuring out what could run, what they would look like, and how they would run. And we are in the process right now. Some of the high school clubs have started, the middle school clubs are just about ready. They're getting proposed right now and, and finalized, so, um, just about everything is running virtually. Um, you know, there's some discussion about what it looks like if you weren't in full remote, that you can join virtually. But if anything does meet on campus, it's really gonna be for those students who are already here that day. We're not gonna have, uh, with the clubs at least, we're not gonna have that cross, uh, cohorting, um, at the middle school level. But I think we've, we've, you know, teachers have done a great job, like they have with everything else, coming up with creative ways to run a club virtually or a slightly different club this year that still has the spirit of the other club, but functions well in, in, you know, this environment of a hybrid environment.
Very much.
McGowan, since you're bringing up some different topics. Quick question, I, we've, I've noticed you've probably seen this too, Scott, that a number of districts have, have talked about encouraging the department to, um, postpone or not, not have the MCAS exam, um, again this year. And I was wondering if you, I was wondering where you stood on, where the district stands on, on um, being able to adequately prepare students for the MCAS exam, uh, coming up this year, assuming it is held, and whether we need to talk about joining that effort.
Sure, so, um, I think that we would, I think that we're fine either way. My, my biggest concern with it is, is the actual time that it will take to administer the exams. Um, the, what we're operating under right now, first of all, federal law would have to change and state laws would have to change. Um, to try to do all that and get that all done, I think in the year of an election, it's not happening until after this. Um, I don't know that it's going to get resolved and changed before January, February, which is one we would have to do. So we have to run, we have to run last spring's exams for the current juniors in January, February. Then we have to do another set of exams in the spring as well. So there's a party that says it's crazy that it's happening and it needs to not happen. Um, there's another party that says we can make the adjustments. I did have some concerns around the technology. Dr. Downs assured me that he feels that we'll be able to, uh, remotely push out some of the test navigation to the device. some of the test navigation to the devices. In the past, we'd have to collect them and do them manually. And I was very concerned with the time that would take. And now you're not just taking a tool away from a kid, you're taking their access to their education away if they don't have their device to do remote learning. But he assured me he feels like he can turn that around pretty quickly. So honestly, I feel like we probably will be able to do the testing and it's not going to be a huge issue. And I think students will be prepared and they will do well. But I also can understand the reason why there would be a resolution just to say, can we consider, you know, why do we need to do this this year? So I would, you know, I would support either voice, but I think, I don't know that there is, it's not as simple as if every local committee demanded it's going to make a change. Because federal law and state law would have to be changed. It did happen in the spring, but there has been no, you know, I think the commissioner is fully aware of this and that it should happen, but he has not indicated in any way that there's any changes to the. I will even say that I'm aware that they're going to be piloting the social studies MCATs this year and our eighth grade teachers are looking forward to piloting that and learning about it. So I mean, I think our teachers, you know, testing is what it is and we're willing to do that as we can. So it's a complicated issue.
Yes, no, I agree. And I think it's something where we just need to think whether we need to advocate for North Reading. Because it doesn't sound like we need to, so.
I saw it and deleted it. Hey, hey, I think just getting into testing is tough then. Kind of no-win situation where I just, I don't know. Well, any, so see what happens. You don't bring in an administrative report. The correspondence, have you received anything, Doctor Dale? The only thing correspondence that I received was a parent who reached out about the science curriculum at the middle school, I forwarded to Doctor Dale, forwarded to the principal, but, you know, interesting. So I think it's good to hear for people, everyone in a while, not complaining about something, just making a suggestion.
Yeah, the suggestion being, you know, is there a way to have an advanced pathway for science as well as there is for math? Which I think is a, it's a very good question that we can explore. It's very different in that the state frameworks for math actually identify, accelerate pathway to calculus. There's courses, there are, it's curriculum written and it's, you know, we're following a pathway right from the frameworks. But the reason why you would want it for math also would exist for science and I think it makes some sense. And we always ask that question, what are we doing for students who've already learned the standard? And, you know, so it's something I will discuss with our science leaders and our principals about, you know, is there an opportunity here for some advanced coursework for students in science as well as math? We've done it through elective certainly and we put our efforts into that in making those electives required, so there's a non-elective, having a STEM course for all students. But I think that obviously is also going to lead to more students being, you know, more students now have more science under their belt than they ever have before. So maybe there's still a need now for another pathway for kids. So I think it's a great thing to explore and we'll certainly look at.
The reason you always reach out to Doctor Dale about this, not me, is because he understands far better than I do. Okay, future business. We have a meeting on November 19. I have a meeting on December 10. If there's nothing else, I'm going to entertain a motion to dismiss.
So cool.
Second?
I was not yawning when I said that.
Janine.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.